Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting in order?
Lennon.
Here.
Roywood.
Here.
Laja.
Here.
Faith.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Eight present, Mayor.
Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
If you could please keep in your thoughts and prayers all the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. Anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the swinging gate, state your name and address. Marybel.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marybel Garcia and I'm the president and founder of Break the Silence Foundation. And we are honored to be here in such a special night with our Board of Director, an amazing Board of Directors, and our support group, which also they are survivors of domestic violence. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and for having us, the First Lady Gail Lovero, and thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do, Marybel.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carol Gall. I'm the executive director with Sarah's Inn and also just want to thank you, Mayor and Councilmen and Women for having us tonight and for honoring domestic violence, what we like to call Domestic Violence Action Month. We know we're coming to an end of the month, but as many of you know, Sarah's Inn is a local domestic violence agency that serves the city of Chicago and the western suburbs. And we do work, working with families who have already been impacted by domestic violence, women, men, children, and teens, as well as we do prevention programming. We were here last week at Heritage Middle School doing our prevention programming with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So, thank you so much for your partnership and all of your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Matt Zurich. I'm at 3234 Highland Avenue. I don't know if this is the proper time to do this, but over three months ago, I brought to attention to my alderman, Jim Wayward, that we are having rats in our alley. We are about two blocks south of the rail yard, and they just come off the rail, the rail cars and everything. And in the past, I have seen on the telephone poles in the alley indicators that this has been, this has been baited and that there's a rat problem and you have to keep your garbage inside your garbage can, and there's a lot of different stuffs in there, and I don't see that this time. And I am afraid that with the colder weather, these rats are going to try to come into our houses.
We, our communications department has already developed new posters for the exterminator to put up in the alleys that has a contact number and expresses that same information, but in a more visible manner than what we've had in the past. In the meantime, some of the aldermen have formed a committee to discuss some of the problems with, and will hopefully come forward with recommendations. In addition, we've been working with the Health District, which we weren't able to do in past years, but now with Clerk Paul, David Avila, and Jackie Paredo, we've worked with the Health District on putting our forces together to try and do as best we can with that problem.
I appreciate any efforts that could be made to, to, to address. I mean, these were big. They were the size of a sweet potato. So, we were quite taken back by it because we've never seen it in, in Berwyn in the nine years we've been here, and, and then it was on our deck, looking for food, and there is no food on our deck, so it didn't stay, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? City Administrator Ruth Valbry, you have something?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. How's it look? I'm going to have a question microphone, possibly?
Use Alderman Lennon's.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Technical difficulties. Thank you, Alderman Lennon. Right before council, I went ahead and I put overviews in front of all of you. A few weeks passed, I explained how I was working with the American Rescue Plan. Those are the almost $32 million that we received from the federal government, only half of it right now, the rest comes 12 months after the first came in, so probably in the springtime. As mentioned, I worked with different department heads, figuring out where our needs were for the city, and you will see in overview, we are only allowed to use these monies in certain ways. One of the ways, you cannot use it, you cannot use it to pay pensions. That is explicitly written, just to keep everyone updated on that. So, there's four different ways that you can actually use these funds, and after, after everything is done, as we're going to be having an audit done, because as, if you have any federal funds over a few million, then they, you're required to do audits. So, we'll, as we've done with the CDBG in the past, once all these funds are used, we'll also make sure to have this done in our audit. We've already spoke with, spoke with our auditors. They're still getting the framework from the Treasury on how to go about that, because they're still coming out with information on this. It's constantly changing. This isn't something we wanted to rush into and started using right away, but it's important that we start discussing it now, as it is budget season, and we've actually started mentioning it in the past few meetings that we've had during the week. So, please take a look at this. If you have any questions whatsoever, feel free to give me a call, email. I'll be more than happy to go over it with you. I've been working with our Finance Director and our Assistant Finance Director, who have already started the reporting. Reporting started a few months ago, and it's every quarter, and we are also working with a consultant that the county was nice enough to provide to different municipalities. So, when it came to questions on if projects were eligible or not, they helped work through the hundreds of pages of regulations that were there to let us know what would qualify under which category, and the details to go about that, how we would use that for the reporting reasons. So, I did not want to rush this, and I'm still following up with lots of things, reading through all the reports and always looking for updates, but if anyone has any questions, feel free to give me a call. More than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, anything for open forum?
I have something.
Yes.
October is World Bullying Prevention Month. During this month, Berwyn schools and communities all over the world work together against bullying. They ask that we join them in solidarity to stop bullying and cyberbullying, make it the month that bullying prevention is heard around the world, stomp out bullying, and end the hate. And November 14 is Block It Out Day, block out cyberbullying. Cyberbullying is when someone repeatedly and intentionally harasses, mistreats, or makes fun of another person online or while using cellphones or other electronic devices. Approximately 32% of the students surveyed by the Cyberbullying Research Center have experienced cyberbullying in their lifetimes. When asked about specific types of cyberbullying experienced in the previous 30 days, mean or hurtful comments and rumors spread online continue to be among the most commonly cited. 26% of the sample reported being cyberbullied in one or more of the 11 specific types reported. Check with your schools or your districts for more information, and I also have some flyers here on the table with information for parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Any other Alderman, open forum? Hearing none. Item C1, please.
Item C1 are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole in the regular meeting of October 12, 2021.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of Committee of the Whole and regular City Council meetings of October 12.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting and the regular City Council meeting of October 12. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman?
I'd like to move F2 forward.
Second.
Motion by Aronella, seconded by Ruiz, to move forward item F2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item F2 is a proclamation declaring October as National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, whereas Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month evolved from the Day of Unity in October 1981, observed by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence. In October 1987, the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month was observed, and whereas that same year marks the initiation of the first National Domestic Violence Toll-Free Hotline, 1-800-799-SAFE, S-A-F-E, or 7233. It's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and whereas in 1989, the U.S. Congress passed Public Law 101-112, designating October of that year as National Domestic Violence Awareness Prevention Month. And whereas in 1994, the Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, passed through both Houses of Congress with bipartisan support and was signed by President Bill Clinton on September 13th, which provided federal financial support toward investigation and prosecution of violent crimes against women, imposed automatic and mandatory restitution on those convicted, and allowed civil redress when prosecutors chose not to prosecute cases. The U.S. Office of Violence Against Women was created after the VAWA passed. And whereas the Violence Against Women Act is a result of the extensive grassroots effort in the late 1980s and early 1990s, advocates for the battered women's movement included sexual assault advocates, survivors, law enforcement agencies, prosecutors' offices, the courts, and the private bar. One of the greatest successes of VAWA is its emphasis on coordinated community response to domestic violence, dating, dating violence, sexual assault, and stalking. Courts, law enforcement, prosecutors, victim services, and the private bar currently work together in coordinated effort that did not exist before the state and local, I'm sorry, did not exist at the state and local levels. And whereas the Violence Against Women Act was reauthorized in 2013 to expand protections to same-sex couples, and provisions were added to allow battered undocumented immigrants to claim temporary visas. This reauthorization expired on February 15, 2019. The U.S. House of Representatives passed a bill reauthorizing the VAWA in April 2019 that includes provisions protecting transgendered victims and banning individuals convicted of domestic abuse from purchasing firearms. This remains an ongoing legislative battle with plans of a new version of the bill being introduced and passing the U.S. Senate. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice estimates 1.3 million women and 835,000 men are victims of physical violence by a partner every year. Every nine seconds, a woman in the U.S. is beaten or assaulted by a current or ex-significant other. Homicide is one of the leading causes of death in the U.S. for women under the age of 44, and nearly half are killed by current or former male intimate partners. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, domestic violence has become a pandemic within a pandemic, with many victims facing the added pressures of increased economic insecurity, increased time in isolation with their abusers, and limited contact with their support networks, making it difficult for victims to access the life-saving services and support they need. And whereas during the National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, we honor the tremendous dedication of advocates and service providers, and especially honor the courage and resilience of survivors, and recommit ourselves to standing with them in dignity and justice without judgment. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Robert J. Lovero, and the members of Berwyn City Council do hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Berwyn, and to observe this month by raising awareness on the resources available for victims, educating young people about healthy relationships centered on respect, supporting victims and survivors in our own families and network, and recognizing the efforts of victim advocates, service providers, and healthcare providers, supporting ongoing survivor legislation, and following the leadership of survivors and working together to end domestic violence and break the silence, entered upon the record of the city of Berwyn the 26th day of October 2021.
So, I'd like to say that I am a new member to Break the Silence Foundation. I'm very proud to be on the board and look forward to doing a lot of great things with Break the Silence, so on that note, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Aronella, seconded by Ruiz, to adopt the resolution, affix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Lija.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Marybel, would you please step forward, please? Representative from Sarah's Inn, could you step forward with us also?
I've had the opportunity to meet Marybel, her husband David, many, many years ago when we were first starting foundation here in the Berwyn, Sisso area, and what she's done in a short period of time is just fantastic. My wife and I attended one of the sessions at their new home, the Harris Bank on Sur Mac Road, and the growth has just been tremendous. Also, I've had the opportunity to work with the 708 Board early on in my career, and we funded Sarah's Inn, and I know the good work that they do all the time. So, I congratulate both you women and strong.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And because they have a new home, Break the Silence Foundation has a lot of work that needs to be done, so they could use the donations. Okay, item F1, please.
Item F1 is a communication from the mayor, appointment of Board of Director for the Berwyn Municipal Securitization Corporation.
I would like to make a motion to concur with Mayor Lovero's recommendation and approve the appointment of Robert Reyes as the new independent Board of Director for Berwyn Securitization Corporation.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to concur with the recommendation and approve the appointment of Robert Reyes as the new independent Board of Director for the Berwyn Securitization Corporation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F3, please.
Item F3 is a proclamation declaring October 20, I'm sorry, proclaiming October 2021 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas we recognize the survivors, advocates, medical professionals, researchers, and caregivers who dedicate their lives toward the finding of a cure and improving the lives of those affected by this illness. And whereas in addition to encouraging women to undergo mammography screenings, it is important to ensure screening programs remain cost-effective, have meaningful discussions about breast cancer causes, prevention, and treatment, work with public health leaders and community advocates to reduce racial disparities in breast cancer outcomes. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert J. Lovero, and the esteemed members of the City Council hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens, government agencies, health institutions, and centers, private businesses, and nonprofits, and survivor and advocate groups to come together to raise awareness of what we can do to prevent and control breast cancer, and remember those who lost their lives fighting this disease, dated this 26th day of October 2021.
I make a motion to adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Aronella, seconded by Ruiz, to adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item H1, please.
Item H1 concerns 6925 Riverside Drive. There are two ordinances.
I'd like to make a motion to concur with the zoning board on the side yard setback variation and override the front setback variation and adopt the ordinance designated as H1B.
Second.
You're overriding the denial.
The denial, overriding the denial of the front setback variation and adopt the ordinance designated as H1B.
Thank you.
Motion by Aronella to accept the recommendation of the zoning board on the one-set variation and override the denial of the variation of the second variation and adopt item H1B, affix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
For, for the record, I'll read the ordinance. An ordinance approving variations relative to a second-story addition to an existing single-family bungalow within the R2 Bungalow Zoning District at 6925 Riverside Drive, Berwyn, Illinois, Edgar Moreno, Rosio Gonzalez. Okay, thanks.
Motion to adopt the ordinance, 1B, H1B, affix the necessary signatures, place on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Lija.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item I1, please.
Item I1 is a communication from Alderman Laja regarding October 30 event at Proxa Park.
I move that we approve the Berwyn Park District's request to have a fire truck and personnel on-site at Proxa Park for the Halloween event's bonfire on October 30, 2021, between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Laja, seconded by Lennon, to approve the request of a fire truck at the South Berwyn Park District's Halloween event on October 30 from 5:00 to 8:00 in Proxa Park. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J1?
Item J1 is a communication from Finance Director Bendage regarding the 2021 Pension Bond Ordinance, and the ordinance reads, it's really long, "An ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not, of not to exceed $99,800,000 in aggregate principal amount of one or more series of the taxable or tax-exempt general obligation bonds for the purpose of funding a portion of the net pension liability of its police pension fund and the firefighter's pension fund, refunding a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds, and paying for the costs related thereto authorizing the execution of a bond order in connection with such general obligation bonds, and providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax for the repayment of the principal and interest on such bonds."
I will make a motion on this, but I'd like to give a little explanation first. In the past, Berwyn, like most cities, had not been funding the pensions properly for years. The state began mandating higher funding percentages and added penalties and fines, which caused even more debt for us. In 2013, the administration got serious, putting together a plan to consolidate the debt, issue bonds, and finally, seriously fund the pensions. It took a lot of hard work, but we are now at the last stage. With this last step, we can finally fund our police and fire pensions fully and avoid any more penalties and fines. We have two choices. We can move forward on this plan that Berwyn has been working towards since 2013, consolidate debt, fund the pensions, and climb out of this hole, or we can choose to fund the pensions at a lower rate, incur penalties and fines, and kick the can down the road. Property taxes are going up, no matter which plan we choose. If we vote no today, we expect the taxes to rise around 420 to 450 next year, and to continue to climb due to higher interest rates. If we vote yes on this plan, taxes will go up, roughly only half that, about $256 next year and 2% a year thereafter, because we will not have penalties and fees to pay, and we will lock in at lower rates. We need to be fiscally responsible. We did not cause this problem, but we can work to fix it. Therefore, I move that we approve an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of a note to exceed, not to exceed $99,800,000 in aggregate principal amount of one or more series of taxable and/or tax-exempt general obligation bonds for the purposes of funding a portion of the net pension liabilities of this police pension fund and the firemen's pension fund. Funding a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds and paying for the costs related thereof, authorizing and executing a bond order in connection with such general obligation bonds, and providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal of and interest on such bonds, affix the signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Laja, seconded by Lennon, to adopt the ordinance that describe, affix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Lija.
Aye.
Faith.
Abstained.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor, one abstention.
Motion carried. Item J2, please.
J2 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucco regarding 20WC 021523.
It'll be my motion to approve the workers' comp settlement, case number 20WC 021523, the amount of $46,559 granted in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Lennon, to approve the settlement in the captioned workers' comp case for the amount of $46,559. It was approved by the authority, granted in executive session. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Lija.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J3, please.
Item J3 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller regarding approval of ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with MWRD for Green Alley Project, and the ordinance is authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Berwyn and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago regarding Green Alley programs for the city of Berwyn, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
Bob.
Bob's not here.
Okay. I'd like to move that we concur with Director Schiller's recommendation to approve the attached ordinance and intergovernmental agreement as presented to council, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Lennon, to concur with the recommendation of Director Schiller, approve the ordinance, affix the necessary signatures, and place on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Lija.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J4, please.
Item J4 is a communication from Director Schiller regarding approval of the attached pay request number two to Pan-Oceanic Engineering for the Depot District Utilities.
I'd like to make, I move that we concur with Director Schiller's recommendation for the approval of pay request number two for $555,885.91 from the city of Berwyn, IEP A Water Main and Sewer Loans.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to concur with the recommendation of Director Schiller and approve pay request number two for $555,885.91 to be paid from the city of Berwyn, IEP A Water Main and Sewer Loans. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Lennon.
Aye.
Roywood.
Aye.
Lija.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J5, please.
Item J5 is a communication from Claudia Ayala regarding the State of Illinois Official 2020 Decennial Census Certificate for the city of Berwyn.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this as informational. I'd also like to thank everyone who was assisted with this outreach we didn't think we were going to do as, as well when we started, and like to thank everybody, and I would definitely like to thank Claudia for her outreach and push and, and everything that she did during this whole campaign.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to consider the communication as informational and thank all those involved in the Government Complete Count Committee, along with Claudia Ayala and co-chair City Clerk March Paul, and thank them for their hard work in getting the numbers to where they are. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The consent decree, consent agenda, I'm sorry.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to approve the Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Aldermanic Committee Meetings, Alderman Lennon?
We have a budget, budget and finance meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, 10:27 at 6:00 p.m. And it'll be over police, and then Thursday, October 28th, 6:00 p.m., and it will be Public Works.
Alderman Wayward?
Bob's here.
Alderman Alasia?
I have a third ward meeting, November 3rd, 6:00 p.m. at Pierre's Banquet Hall on 3237 Harlem Avenue.
Alderman Faith?
Call it, Chair.
Alderman Pabon?
We are holding the Ad hoc Right Abatement Committee meeting on November 2nd at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. And then I also have a ward meeting in November, November 16th at 6:00 p.m. at Head Park Studio.
Alderman Ruiz?
Call the Chair.
Alderman Aronella?
Call the Chair.
Alderman Carmichael?
Call the Chair. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Carmichael, seconded by Pabon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.